Morning and we are live.
Welcome, everybody, to the May 19th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. I will call the roll because we're online and that is required as our first order of business. Alden Clark.
Here.
Beth Delil.
Here.
Great. Anne Gardner.
Here.
Tanya Hartford.
Here.
Liam McGovern.
Yeah.
Rick Tainter is absent. MJ Verde.
Here.
Is Don Walters in yet?
Yes, Don, if I think you're here, but you'll have to press, I think, star six to unmute.
I'm here, I'm here.
Good.
I'm present.
Okay, you are present and Bonnie Santag, I'm here. Linda Guthrie, our note taker is here, as is Andy Port, Director of Planning Development, and Caitlin Sullivan, the planner. And Jennifer Blanchett, the zoning administrator, is not here yet. Andy, do you know if she's?
She may be joining us, just not here yet. Sure.
And, yeah, okay, fine. So, let me go through the agenda. And note that we're going to change the order of the first two items due to a potential conflict for one of the members of one of the applicant teams. So they wanted to get Evergreen done first. So we're going to start with a request for minor modification for Evergreen Commons. And then we will have a public hearing on 21 to 27 Hancock Street, the definitive subdivision and Courts and Lane special permits. We will then go to the rest of the agenda, approval of minutes, discussion of proposed zoning amendments, any planning updates or other updates from the chair or the planning director. At this point, let me just say a few words about a request for a minor modification for the general public. This is not a public hearing. A minor modification does not require that we have public comment. Sometimes, if it's in rare situations, if we don't know about the information that we need from members of the public, I will allow it. Tonight, I want to note that there are specific issues that we will be discussing that are included in the request for the minor modification and other outstanding issues. And there's a written list from some homeowners at Evergreen Commons that we will take into consideration and go through that list. I don't believe we'll need to hear from them as everything is very clearly outlined in there. And so I just wanted to set expectations that this will be a review with the applicant and finish with a vote on the request. So I'd like to turn it over to the applicant's attorney. And have you get started for us.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Lisa Mead, me telling my cost on behalf of Evergreen Commons. And with me this evening is Steve Sawyer, who is the engineer on the project, and Chip Paul, who is the principal from Evergreen Commons. As the chair indicated, we're here for a request of minor modification. I'll tell the board, we have already been in front of the Conservation Commission for this request and they have approved it. For just the request, we had some other conversation with them about other things that are not in the request and we can talk about that later. But the Conservation Commission did approve these minor modifications, mostly because they obviously revolve around the landscaping as well as the stormwater and then the implications related to the application of the Homeowners Association, a particular provision which the Conservation Commission's decision also dealt with and approved originally. So we have three sets here. We have landscape plan changes, which I'm going to talk about briefly. And then we have stormwater system changes, which Steve Sawyer is going to talk about. And then the modification to the provision in the Homeowners Association, which actually arose out of the whole process that we've all been through over the last two years and the issuance of certificates of occupancy and confirmation of certain numbers. And we worked with both Julia as well as Jennifer to come up with this proposed solution. So first, if you can go to the next slide, please. So here's the modified proposed landscape plan. And a couple of the things that have changed, and because this board originally approved the landscape plan, we're back before the board to approve the modification. But the original landscape plan, let's start in the top left, included a second bridge over that wetlands area towards where that lighter area is. For two reasons, when Tom Hughes, our conservation consultant, was on site with Julia, they indicated that, you know, really, it's really too close to have both of those bridges over the wetlands area. And there would be less impact on the wetlands if we had two bridges. So it was suggested that the bridge be removed and that plantings be changed to be appropriate for no bridge in that area. So that's one of the changes. The next change comes, if you kind of move to the right toward Duffy Drive, you'll see a access to Duffy Drive off the trail. That trail location has changed slightly and Steve could talk a little bit more about that. But that was in an effort to make that applicable accessible and meet the appropriate standards for accessibility. The next change had to do with adjustments to some plantings in the open space area. So up to the left of the large wetlands, parallel to the highway, there was some plantings up there that was Pollinator Meadow. But because of the shadow that was cast from the trees that along the embankment, the Pollinator Meadow wasn't doing as well. And so those plantings have been changed to be a different species. And Pollinators, Pollinator Meadow still exists on site, obviously, but just the plantings along that area have changed. And similarly up where, if you ever play golf out here, it would be the fourth green, which would be the bottom of the plan here, there's that little finger. There are a lot of tall trees around there, too. So the, there were changes in the plantings in that area as well. I'm going to show you some details on this in a little bit. And then the last change that really took place was that in the planting of the trees, the street trees. So let me be clear that the number and species of the trees remain the same. That is, the variety and the total number remain the same. Except for that, when the landscape contractor first started to install the trees, he misread the letter on the trees. And I'm going to go to a plan here to show you in a minute. So some of the trees have not yet been planted. So for example, around Gabary Court, which is at the bottom, the finger cul-de-sac, those trees haven't been planted, so those will be planted per the original plan. And then there are some trees that haven't been planted up along lots 23, 23, 24, and 22. Those will be consistent. But if you go to the next plan, please. And if you can blow it up a little bit, if you wouldn't mind, Andy. So what happened was, you can see on this plan, so if you see in the roadway around the central green, you can see the letters AAAA. So that's actually the species that was planted as opposed to what was called for on the planting plan, which, if you look a little closer, is a B. So the consistency exists as far as all of those around that area being the same. On the outer edge, the inner edge is the crab apples, which is what was called for. But the outer edge was really originally supposed to be a B, which is a hornbeam as opposed to an A, which is a red maple. And so the red maples were planted similarly along the entrance off of Boyd. Those were all supposed to be As, which would have been red maple. And instead, those are Cs, which are sweet gum. So the variety and the number of the trees that are planted are the same. They were just modified somewhat. So that is a change. So if you can go to the next slide, please. And so this is a, this is actually just notes from what's actually going to be planted up along where the Pollinator Meadow was. The shrubs that will be planted in that location up along the edge, instead of the Pollinator Meadow. And the next slide, please. Similarly, these are more comments about up along the fourth, what I would refer to as the fourth green, what those plantings will be. These were all done in consultation with, obviously with the conservation consultant. And the next slide, please. And then the operation and maintenance plan was changed to reflect the new plantings of the flowering bushes and various woody plantings that were planted instead of the Pollinator Meadow. And then the next slide, please. Again, this is the, the final plan that we received approval from the Conservation Commission from. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve to talk about the stormwater system changes. And that would be the next slide, please, Andy.
Hi, Andy, and Planning Board member Steve Sawyer with Design Consulting. And so we, we made some minor changes to basically overall intent and water quality treatment and mitigation has remained unchanged. But what I'll do is I'll start with, start with this, with this slide here. You'll notice below lots four, five, six, seven, there's, what we did is behind lot five, there was a, we installed a dry well. And with that, and a overflow pipe that basically flowed behind five, six, and seven, and then discharged into the first rain garden, rain garden B. Now, we did that. What happened was it was, this is a very flat area. That's one thing about this site, you know, it's a very wide open flat site. We had a very subtle swale, very subtle shallow, slight grade around the back of those, directing sheet flow to the rain garden. But we had issues with ponding in that location. So we installed a dry well, which alleviated the ponding between lots five and one and two, mitigated that. Now, the other, as we work around rain garden C, which is just above lot 14, the rest, the remaining four rain gardens, what we had designed, initially designed, was a overflow. An overflow, basically a weir or berm, and the water would flow sheet flow across and out of the, out of the rain garden and towards, in this case, towards the water feature. We ran into many issues, or we ran into a lot of issues with, it was just continually eroding. We're having troubles stabilizing. So what we did is we installed a, basically a controlled or for stamp pipe, which the water would basically pools up and then overtops it into the pipe. And then it's hard pipe to the water feature. And also rain garden C, we did that behind lot 17. So basically a stamp pipe, it provides the same treatment. It's just a manner, a different manner, same volume. It's just a different manner of releasing the water during the extreme events out of the rain garden. And with that, it was, everything kind of took hold and mitigated the, any of the erosion issues we had. So if we can go to the next slide.
If I can just interrupt for a minute, Steve. You ought to remind the board that you did all of this in consultation with John Eric.
Yes, absolutely. These were, all the changes were reviewed with closely coordinated with John Eric. He agreed that it was a good idea to mitigate the erosion and any sedimentation that might be washing through with this hole, with the outlet. There was just a little more water than I anticipated flowing through these features. And as far as the erosion, the erosion nature of it was a little more aggressive than I thought it might have been, would have been. And so we just felt this was the best way to mitigate and stabilize, stabilize everything. So once again, so the last rain garden behind lot 23, it's the same, same idea. It was a stand pipe and then pipe to the vegetated, the constructed vegetated wetland. And then the final change, if we look behind lots 29, 28, 27, 26, originally what I had was, we had a series of dry wells back there where the water from the behind, the back of the homes and anything coming down slope from the city property would flow and then flow into the dry wells and then be piped, basically piped to the, there's a drainage pipe between 26 and 27. Any overflow from that or any surcharge of that would be piped between 26 and 27. So what we did was, John Eric didn't like that. He said, you know, dry, you know, his feeling was, it was, as we're getting into construction, he thought about it. And he said, I really don't, putting water directly into the, you know, directly into the ground, into the sea layer without any treatment. And that's the closest area to the, closest area to the wells. He felt that, he asked if I could redesign it to direct it away and across the street. So it basically is a circuitous route directed away from the, from the, the well area. So what we did is we provided a stone trench with the pipe, perforated pipe to intercept the water behind lots 28, 27, 26. And then there's a basin here and then it's piped across the street or piped into, I guess that's rain garden F, rain garden F. So that, that's, that's the limit of the changes for the, for the stormwater. And they were all, all of these were, well, some of them, one of them was a recommendation from John Eric White, the city engineer. And then the, the others were all closely coordinated with John Eric White. And, and once again, there's no change in the stormwater treatment. It's just a different manner of allowing the outlet, of allowing the water to exit the rain gardens.
Thank you, Steve. And so the last change is the Homeowners Association document. There's a paragraph in the Homeowners Association document, as this board knows, because we've had lots of conversations about it. It essentially allowed 5% increase over the lot size, the condition of the lot at the time of the occupancy permit over the life of the lot. Except for, for the lots, which was down to 2% because of the three car garages, the board might recall. So there was a lot of consternation and back and forth with the planning office about how do we know that? How best can we determine what that is when the occupancy permit is issued? What about 10 years down the road? You know, when the end result of the site is that there was more impervious than the original calculation? How does that impact it? So we worked with Julia and Jennifer. And Steve came up with this. And so essentially, he did an analysis that overbuilt the site, so to speak. And I'm going to let him talk about that. So he could show that the 5% increase over the development or the impervious on the site at the date of occupancy, which is almost all of the lots now, we know the layouts otherwise, would not be.
Attorney Mead, we've lost you, I think.
Actually, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
Okay. So I, actually, I can jump in here. Hopefully she can connect back in. So as part of the Conservation Commission process, they, they asked that I tabulate, carefully tabulate all of, all of the impervious, the current impervious surfaces and then on the site. And so I went through that and we did, the site, based upon the original drainage calculations, we were, we were over, we were somewhat slightly over, I believe it was like 10,000 or 15,000 square feet over the original. But given the size of the drainage area, I recalculated the ILSF. And there was probably a, a change of, I think, between a quarter and a half inch was, the elevation was a quarter and a half inch higher, which is insignificant as far as, as far as our, you know, stormwater calculation, the ILSF elevation. So then from there, what I did is, okay, I, you know, as far as the additional, we said, okay, I added on an additional 5%, an additional 5% to each lot. So what we, what we done is we, we added the, okay, an additional 5% and then came up with the total area. The total area of the impervious. I, with that, I recalculated the, with this additional 5%, I recalculated the impervious area. And I believe it was less than, I think it was around three quarters of an inch elevation rise in the ILSF because of the, because of this additional, additional impervious area. So it's, it was insignificant. The Conservation Commission agreed that, that that was an insignificant increase and would, no potential, you know, basically de minimis in regards to the calculation. And then what they have asked is that we, they want to manage it. So with each house at the COC, for CFO, we're providing a, actually, if we go to the next sheet, oh, there it is right there, I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong screen. We're providing a, an eight and a half by 11 for each lot that, that will show the current impervious, current, the current site as the status of the current site, lot area, the house impervious, driveway impervious, landscape impermeable surface, patio and walkways, total, total surface impervious, then they present. And then we, we provide a 5%, with the 5% additional, how many square feet they're allowed to increase the impervious area. So that's, the Conservation thought that was a good idea. And I believe the Planning Department also thought that would be a good idea to manage how we're going to handle the additional, or these sites as they move forward after they have the certificate of occupancies.
Yeah.
So we're in the process. Go ahead.
Yeah, if I could, just for the Office of Planning and Development, you know, just to confirm, this is essentially the organized way that we felt this additional impervious cover needed to be dealt with properly in order to address compliance with the original permit and making sure that the city's water supply and recharge that was originally calculated would be managed going forward, recognizing that folks may want to do something larger with their original, than their original homes, you know, going forward. We had to have an organized way of making sure it was compliant. So this essentially does that in an organized way. And as Steve said, and Attorney Mead had mentioned, Jennifer Blanchet has looked at this table, I've looked at this table. Julie Garvitz and the Conservation Administrator has looked at it. And we think that this is the proper way of making sure that in the future, we don't have more coverage happening here than was intended, such that we have additional flooding, you know, issues.
Can you hear me now?
You're back.
Okay, awesome. So just to carry on with what Andy said. And so in order to like, kind of wrap this all up with a bow, the Homeowners Association document needs to be amended. To be clear that, that, and I gave the board this, this language, that instead of it saying conditions of the lot, it says size of the lot. So the condition which I proposed to the board was 5% over the size of the lot or 2% over the size of the lot. And if the board approves that, the Conservation Commission has already approved it and we will record that amendment tomorrow. So it would all go hand in hand with these tools that will be provided to the planning office. And with that, those are our requested changes. I don't know, Madam Chair, if you want to vote on those changes first and then we can go to the other issues, because I want to address a couple of issues that were in the staff comments. I have some proposals that I think the board is going to want to hear, which aren't, of course, formally before the board. We would come back to a, a board meeting with a form.
Whoops, I think we just lost you again. Well, just to answer that question, I think we'll hold this open as it's guiding our entire discussion, the modifications. So just to keep it clean, we'll have all our discussions now and then take the vote at the end. I would like to review something that I thought Jennifer would be here to comment on.
I believe, although I'm here, this is Andy, I believe Jennifer's joined us.
Right, okay. So this refers to the, to the increase, the numbers increasing the impervious coverage for each lot. And I believe it was recommended, we discussed it in our preparation meeting, that it would be advisable to add to the Homeowners Association a statement to the effect that there is to be 33% maximum impervious coverage for each lot. If I got that correct, I'd like Jennifer or Andy to confirm that.
Oh, go ahead, Jennifer, yep.
What I was referencing and wanting to just have the board clarify and the applicant verify is that for the unbuilt lots at the time this table was prepared, that the assumption was they would have a 33% maximum at the time of occupancy permit, because that is what Steve Sawyer's calculations were based upon. And the 5% increase or 2% increase, as it might be for any of those unbuilt lots in this table, would be maximum of 33%. It's, it's just a point of clarification, because we are referencing this table. If the amendment is adopted as proposed, but I did want to clarify.
Actually, we, I'm looking at currently, some of these lots are over. You know, I think what the average, I think what I did is when I was trying to extrapolate, when I was trying to extrapolate, I calculated the average for, for the, for the lots. And it was 30.
Yeah, Steve, this is Andy. I think, without looking into the minutia of the calculations, I think that it can, my understanding of this is that it's basically boiled down to 33% maximum is the suggested addition to this, you know, proving this modification is, you know, recognition that there's a 33% maximum on the unbuilt lots, rather than confusing with the other lots, which you have mentioned in this table, some of which do go over 33%, but that's, that's reflected in the calculations you've already done. What's suggested here, I think, by Jennifer, and Jennifer, you correct me if I'm wrong, is that there's 33% is the maximum for the unbuilt lots, right?
That is correct, and that is based on the average, as you say, Steve.
Okay.
All right. So for clarification, do we want to have a, a condition on this minor modification?
I mean, if the office's recommendation is followed, I would suggest approval of the modification with a condition and note in the certificate of approval that for the unbuilt lots, as reflected on the table, there should be a 33% maximum coverage.
Yeah, that would be inappropriate to have in the Homeowners Association document, rather than, it would be a certificate of approval.
I'm a little, I'm looking at, and I'm a little concerned, maybe lot 24, we might creep out. It might be one of the ones that it's a small lot. Sometimes some of those small lots end up a little heavy. So that, I guess that's the only thing, you know, then other ones, you know, other ones will be small, you know, a little bit, would be less. Having a little bit of a, little, little angst applying the average 33 to all of them, you know, as a max.
What if the condition was that on the lots that are not yet built, the average can't exceed 33%?
Of the remaining?
Yeah, which is the same that exists today.
I'd be okay with that, because I know, you know, like 10, 11, 14, we'll all be well under. What, what concerns me is this, this two, 24 and 23 and 24, we may end up being real tight and might be creeping over it.
For the Office of Planning Development, I would have no objection to that. I think that generally, that's the same area of catchment anyway. So even a slight adjustment in one of those lots is not going to make a difference. And as you mentioned, if Attorney Mead's suggestion is followed, it's really going to be the same maximum for all three lots combined anyway, so.
That was, that was the thought.
Okay, so the wording would be 33% maximum coverage on average for unbuilt lots as of this time.
Correct.
Correct.
That would be acceptable.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if you're going to continue on, then I'd like to bring up two of the bigger points, I think, at least from our, our point of view.
Could we wait on that and just wrap all this up?
Oh, yeah, that'd be great, yeah.
So I want to open it to the Planning Board members for any questions or comments on basically these three elements that are included in the request for a minor modification.
I have a comment, this is MJ. So where do pools fit into this? They are considered impervious, I assume.
Yes, they're part of the impervious surface, so that would have to be part of the calculation.
Should that be added in some way? I mean, it seems like, you know, you talked about patios and, you know, whatever. It just seems like.
It's already in the Homeowners Association.
Yeah, I saw that wording, MJ. It's considered impervious. Is that good enough for you? Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to the other issues, if you will. Attorney Meade, please.
Okay, so the two issues that I want to address, and I, you know, I want to remind the board that, you know, we're not here seeking a certificate of compliance, right? So there are a number of issues that still have to be addressed on this site. We just did a major replanting out there, a major fertilization and a whole host of other things on the open space. So I, so I want to remind the board that we're not here asking for a certificate of compliance related to some of the issues first from some of the homeowners. Uh, but as the board has seen from Andy's comments, um, and as you know, the applicant had requested and the had suggested, and the board put it in their decision that the trail, the six-foot stone path trail be continued up to connect to the Garrison Road Trail. And Steve started working with Mass DOT, uh, in two thousand nineteen to get them to pay attention and try to approve, um, that connection. Um, more recently, um, it has become very clear, um, and Andy has seen this, that Mass DOT will not um, approve that connection, uh, because there is a, I'm going to call it something that's not, not proper, but I'll call it a line of demarcation that may not be passed over in order to connect it to the trail. And so, um, we have learned that recently, I think it was two weeks ago, Andy, and we attempted to get some meetings and um, in in any event, um, Andy has currently put forth to the board that alternatively, given the reluctance of Mass DOT, that the applicant design an accessible trail connection up to the Garrison Road Trail, so in the future, if the city were able to make that connection, there would be a a design on hand. Um, in addition to that, um, as you can see on this plan, opposite the trail.
My apologies, I was giving some context. Go ahead, Attorney.
That's right, uh, well, this, on this plan is fine, opposite the trail over by the city's wellhead area, as you know, um, the, um, applicant is deeding over to the water department, uh, section of land um, to increase their well setback area. This was part of, you know, a long part of our process when we got permits. Um, the, uh, Conservation Commission agent and the mayor and some others would really like to have a split rail fence along, I'm going to call it the half moon there, that's right there, would like to have a split rail fence along the half moon area delineating the open space from, uh, what will become the water department property. And I just want to correct something. Um, Julia, in her comments to the board, indicated that there was no uh, demarcation between the back of the property lines and the water department, to be water department land, and that's just not true. Uh, there are bound markers at the back of every one of the property lines, and then, of course, there's the open space, and then there is the water department land. Nonetheless, uh, the applicant would be willing, if we kind of wrap this up, to also put a split rail fence along that half moon. So we would come in to the board with a, um, proposed modification at a later date, um, not too much later, but a later date that would, uh, call for the installation of a split rail fence along that half moon pursuant to the mayor's request and the Conservation Agent's request. Um, and then, um, also with the modification to require the plans and design for the connection to a, a, um, accessible connection to the, uh, rail trail. And so I wanted to address that because it's, we haven't been able to get back to Andy on it because we've been looking at a couple of things, trying to figure out if there was a way to actually do the connection to the rail trail, but it doesn't look at this point like it's going to happen. I'm not, you know, it's just Andy's seen the emails and it doesn't look like it's going to happen, so. Um, I wanted to throw that out to the board because, um, the applicant would be willing to come into a, for modification, uh, with both of those items.
Could you clarify on the, um, path connection? Is there any indication out there now, or is there planning to be one, that it is, that it's uh, accessible to the general public for people to walk that route and eventually, you know, if and when the uh, access path goes onto the trail?
Um, so, yeah, I don't have, yep, I don't have, um, I can't see if there, so the, we got signage approved with the Conservation Commission, and there's a sign, I believe, and I don't have the sign playing with me, but I believe there's a sign at the beginning of the entrance over off of Boyd, which is actually a new sign that the Conservation Commission had us add, uh, which talks about this being a public accessible area and trail and public open space, and then actually gives the history of the property in photographs. Um, and these are all interpretive signage like, um, the ones that the city has been putting out throughout the city. And then there's another sign that I also believe, um, because the Conservation Commission was very clear about this, either at the upper end of Duffy or the middle end of Duffy, which, um, talks about it being publicly accessible, open space and trails.
Okay, great. Um, and in the, uh, comment in the staff report, it also asks for an easement to provide the city access, um, to to actually, um, implementing the, um, the access trail.
Sure, um, yeah, that wouldn't be.
A modification?
Sure, that wouldn't be a problem either, because we would need to show it on the Conservation Restriction Plan, Madam Chair, um, to be developed, um, access trail, and we certainly, as part of that whole filing, could do uh, an easement to the city, which the city already has anyway, but we could specifically do it for that. That wouldn't be an issue.
Great, thank you. Um, and there's an open issue, uh, did you have anything else on your list?
No, those are the two, um, major items I have on my list.
It's an open issue, um, just an update we need on the shutdown of the temporary irrigation system that's allowing this, um, development to, um, access city water.
It's been.
It's been capped.
It's been capped and shut down.
Yay, thank you. Um, what else is on this list? I think I want to have a a review of the homeowner, the homeowners, that I know it's a limited number, but it's, um, not the entire Homeowners Association, but those folks who got together calling themselves homeowners at the cottages of Port Place. Their list of concerns, um, have you seen this, Attorney Meade?
We have, uh, I opened it up this morning. They're part of a list that, uh, also went to the Conservation Commission. This is the list I was referring to before, uh, indicating to the board that we were not here seeking a certificate of compliance, that everything was done, because it's not all done yet, as the board knows. So, um, a number of these issues can be addressed, um, if, in fact, they are issues, as part of that process over the next, uh, forty-six months.
Okay, and that will you, um, review for everybody's edification? Um, the, this role of the development, the developers and the city in that to uh, assuage any concerns that these issues won't be dealt with or will be dealt with, whatever, two negatives make a positive.
Yep, so the city is holding, um, the approval approvals require that the last certificate of occupancy cannot be released um, until a number of things are completed. Um, and not the least of which is, we get a final certificate of completion from uh, the this board that all improvements that were required have been made and made according to plan, uh, that the conservation restriction is approved and recorded, and, um, that, uh, you know, the drainage is working, the peer review engineer signs off on that. Um, we won't have a final certificate of compliance from everything, but we'll have partial certificates of compliance from the Conservation Commission. Um, so, uh, there are a number of final check, checkmarks, so to speak, that have to happen before the board releases, uh, any bonds that it might be holding and or that last house. And just so everybody knows, it's, the developer's not walking away, the developer actually had that last, all of these houses are now under agreement. So there's a timeframe by which they're going to need to finish these houses to do the sales. So, um, that's what we are trying to do, uh, to make sure that it's all done. Uh, for example, from the Conservation Commission's point of view, we have to, we're not going to get a full certificate of completion until we have two growing seasons done, um, that everything lives through. So, um, it's not just the planning board that is checking out on all of these things, it's also, uh, the Conservation Commission. And we're not here for that final checkoff by any stretch of the imagination.
Okay, good, um, but I do want to recognize the concerns of the homeowners here on this list, and, um, for them to feel that they are, these will be addressed, and, um, that this, the, the city and the developer are looking at that together through these processes, um, with the planning and the Conservation Commission, and most importantly, any major issues we will be reviewing before, or actually Jennifer Blanchet will be reviewing as a zoning administrator before the final occupancy permit is issued.
Correct.
Okay, good. Planning board members, having looked at all the most recent documentation, the new plans, and hearing what's been said this morning, would anyone like to add anything or question anything?
No questions, Bonnie.
Is there any concern that this is not a minor modification before I call for a vote? As I will be asking for a vote that this is considered minor, and then a vote on approval of the minor modification as we normally do, and I will combine the two. If there is no concern by any planning board member, this is not a minor. Is that okay with everybody? I'm looking for.
There was no concern from this, there was no concern from the staff, Bonnie?
No, there was not.
Okay.
All right, so I will take, are we there, Andy? I don't want to close this off unless I've left anything out or.
I know, sure, uh, as, you know, with the modification discussed this evening, uh, we, you know, we recommend or don't have any issue at this point with, uh, what is requested here. Um, I do note there is a, a hand raised in the audience, but I defer to you, uh, on whether public comment will be taken. But, uh, at this point, um, we think that the, uh, items are pretty clear as far as what's being requested here.
Yeah, we've, we've covered everything that, you know, was, was given to us, and, um, oh, you know, if we were face to face, we could just have a quickie with the person to find out what it's about. Let's find out, um, I'll, I'll just exceptionally ask that that one person be allowed to speak.
Bill, are you there?
Uh, I am here. Um, my name is Bill Brown. I live at ten Duffy Drive. I just have a few comments, um, with regard to the impervious surfaces. Um, I did a quick review of the drawing, and I know for sure that at least four lots are incorrect, including my lot, lot thirty-four. Um, I have roughly three hundred square feet more of impervious surface on my lot, because the patio, which is twelve by twenty-four, is not shown. There's walkways that are not shown as well. Um, so I know that there are some inaccuracies on the plan. And I think that if these are going to relate to people's lots, that the homeowners should have the ability to review to make sure that they are accurate, because they're going to become part of the record. So, um, I would request, uh, that that, uh, that that be done. With regard to the fence, I think that the homeowners would prefer not to have a fence. If you look at the area that the fence would be proposed, the, the grading in that area has changed from the submission drawings, and um, originally, the area of the half moon, um, where the dark, uh, black line is shown, where there was supposed to be a grade change up. Now the land has been pushed back to the property, what is shown as the former property line for the well. And this fence is going to sort of sit out in the middle of the field and look very, very odd. Um, we understand that, um, you want to deep demarcate, um, the area of the well, and one of the options would be to take, uh, boulders, which there are here some on site, and maybe place them at fifty feet on center so that they're out in the middle of the field instead of a fence that, you know, eventually over time is not going to, uh, look very good. Um, I'm not going to make any comments on the document that I sent, uh, to, uh, the planning board and the concom at this time, because I know that you're going to be going through those issues and uh, commenting and addressing them, uh, as we go through it. But one, one of our biggest concerns actually is ADA access on the paths uh, and, uh, ADA issues, uh, related to, um, the playground, and there is a memo in the document that addresses that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for that clarification. Um, I'm a little concerned about the fact that there might be incorrect calculations, but Steve Sawyer is the, um, the engineer on this, uh, is he still with us?
Uh, yes, I am. Actually, we, uh, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, yes.
Uh, yeah, so, um, we were made aware of that, that, because I could say right now are currently are as-built, it's kind of the as-built plan is a running, um, it's been ongoing, there's still lots to be finished. Um, I did look at those, um, I was getting information from Everett Chandler, and I think that patio was not on the plan. Um, prior to issuing each of these, we don't have a problem. Uh, you know, the, these, all of these lots would be triple-checked before submitted to the, submitted to the planning office. And, um, you know, I don't, I guess I don't have an issue, just if, if the homeowners want, I can just have the eight and a half by eleven and run through it.
And there's, and it's going to have to be stamped as well for the planning office, so they know that it's verified. So that's, that's not an issue.
Well, it's, it's one thing to verify, um, with a stamp. Um, does that mean that someone other than, um, Steve is going out there to certify that in fact, everything that is on the ground is on the plan and vice versa?
But, so it would be Everett and Steve, and as Steve suggested, they are happy to, to, you know, meet with the homeowner and, and double-check. That's not an issue.
That's what I was hoping for as well. That's really great. If you can make sure that happens with, um, Mr. Brown mentioned four lots, so find out who those are and, um, maybe use him as your direct contact and make sure that this is sorted. Um, on the fence, are, are we done? I'm sorry, Steve.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm all set, yeah, good.
Okay. On the fence, um, the issue is not a fence or a boulder, the issue is to keep, um, everybody out of the water protection area. Um, we've had less serious situations in that we've had other OSRDs where we just wanted to keep people out of the, um, conservation area, so that backyards wouldn't just morph into public area. Um, this is much more serious. Um, I liked the idea of something visual like a fence. I'm not sure how visible boulders will be, even with the, the granite, uh, markers. Those are just at the edges of properties, um, on either side. Um, board members, would you like to weigh in on this? What you think is, uh, would be appropriate and concern of the homeowners?
This is Don Walters. I think the fence makes sense for the reasons you just said, Bonnie.
Okay, anyone else?
Bonnie, this is Andy. Do you mind if I, uh, comment? I know I'm not a board member.
I'd like the board members first, Andy, if you don't mind, please. Okay.
I, I agree. I think, uh, something more visible like the fence or, uh, rather than, um, the boulder spaced that far apart would be a more visual, uh, cue.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, this is MJ. Um, I agree, however, I also, um, um, appreciate the point that the caller made, that the fence will go into disrepair, obviously, within probably five to ten years and need to be replaced if it's truly a wooden fence. Um, so is there some kind of accommodation for that?
Um, I'm under the impression that composite materials, um, last a lot longer. I don't know, that's on buildings. I don't know if that's true with fences.
Um, maybe, I wouldn't want a white fence. I mean, I think that would look odd. I think, you know, if it's a true, uh, the way they describe it is a wooden fence.
Split rail. The mayor and the Conservation Commission requested a split rail fence.
Right.
Right, we're talking about the materials, right, split rail is, is, you know, you can see through it and everything, but we're talking about materials and color right now, um, so that it would be. so that it would be as obtrusive to people from their properties.
We're talking about a wood, natural wood, split rail fence.
Okay. Well, the maintenance issues are going to be there regardless, I suppose, over time. This is, is this part of the homeowners? Would this become part of the homeowners association responsibility, Attorney Mead?
No, this would be on the, this would be on the city side of the, of the U shape, if you will. The city has requested this and they, you know, that's our proposals to have it on the city side of the U shape situation. And hence the split rail fence, which is easier to maintain and replace rails is necessary.
Andy, where do we go with something like this? I don't want to put a burden on the city.
Yeah, I mean.
It does not seem right.
Yeah, if you want to hold off on, you know, deliberation, I, my perspective is that it's always worth taking into account the staff's comments before deliberating or making a decision. But it seems pretty clear to me that, you know, we've talked directly with the Water Department. Their, their original request here, again, if you look at that map and you can see the rectangular parcel we have at well, too. Their original request was to have a, a more substantial fence there, something that actually is something that folks can't just hop right over, right? So the split rail fence is actually a compromise from the Water Division's perspective as far as the protection of that area. They and the Conservation Administrator have determined that there is still yard waste and things that are being dumped back there on the city property. We realize that some folks say, oh, no, it's not that much, but they have noticed that happening and newer materials as well that are possibly coming from yard areas as well. So the problem that we have here is we need to better delineate that. Now, it's up to the board to decide what you want to do with this, but it seems pretty clear to me that we need a better delineation there. There are, as you can see in the photograph, there are fences for the new homes. A lot of folks have, you know, added new fences behind there for their individual backyards, but that bleeds into the common open space that is parcel or open space two, which is sort of a meandering sliver. And then you have the actual parcel A sliver that's going to the city, which is that berm you sort of see in the background, if you will, against the trees. So there, there's lack of clarity as to where things are. And, you know, again, the Water Division itself, for perspective, watched something that was a, you know, a 600 foot high fence, you know, chain link, something like that, to really keep people from going back and dumping things on the city property near the city well.
So if I, if I could just carry out, so part of this is why I wanted to have a conversation with Andy. I wanted to let the board know that's what we were thinking about. We can work it out with Andy and other city staff. But I, I do want to be really clear about something. The fences aren't bleeding into the open space. In fact, because we have to make sure that there are no encroachments on the open space, when we provide the conservation restriction, we've gone out, put bounds in, and where there are encroachments, and there are four, they have been sent letters and are being removed. And the encroachments are by inches, by the way. So we are clearly taking care of making sure that there are no encroachments on the open space. I just wanted to be really clear about that.
That's great. Thank you very much. And we do have, have a report of yard waste being dumped over there. So that's a different issue.
Right, I understand that, which is why the applicant, I, I suggest, or I don't think, Madam Chair, we're going to get this issue resolved tonight, that the applicant has said yes to the fence. And we're willing to work with Andy and the mayor and the Water Department to figure out what that means and then come back and make that presentation to the board.
All right, I see your point. So this is, well, this starts that conversation, but when you come back requesting that modification, we'll look at it in a lot more detail.
Yes, I understand that.
Perfect. Okay, yeah, I just realized that was requested for a future modification. Then we've handled all those issues that were raised by the homeowners. Yeah, okay, good. So anything further from board members at this point?
No.
Okay, sort of seeing, looking at faces, not seeing anything coming at me. So I would like to have a motion to deem the request minor, approve the minor modification to the definitive subdivision and OSRD special permit with the condition added that 33% maximum coverage on the average for unbuilt lots as of this time.
Including the HO, Madam Chair, just including the HOA modification, too, please.
And the HOA modification, yes. All right, I'll take a motion.
This is Tanya, so moved.
Yeah, that you, okay. Okay, Tanya and Leah on those, Linda. And let me get the list so I can remember everybody's name. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So the minor modification has been approved. Thank you to everybody who's participated in this conversation. And we are done with this one for Evergreen Commons.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Let's move backwards to the public, I'm going to reopen the continued public hearing for 2125 Hancock Street and 27 Hancock Street. To remind everybody, we reviewed the, all the findings and the conditions and the prepared language in the draft decisions at our last meeting. We asked tonight to just have the applicant confirm the final site plan and building plan in the plan set as a result of zoning board decision to approve a two-family use on 27 Hancock. And I believe there was another, I've forgotten at the moment what it was. Attorney Mead, you can remind me of what they approved so that we can move forward with this.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. The zoning board approved the two-family use of 27 and the special permit for non-conformities of 27. So you, you received those final footprints, you received the final landscape plans. And actually, as of yesterday, you received the final sign-off and corrected plans which we have in front of you, which we received some comments on Monday or, yeah, Monday from the Water Department. And Steve already incorporated those into the plan set.
Okay. Since this is still a public hearing, I will open for any public comments. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? Andy, do you see anybody?
Just giving a moment, but I don't see any hands just yet.
I don't expect there will be, but I just wanted to follow protocol.
Right, yeah, I wouldn't expect it to this late point.
Okay, so I'm going to close the public comments, open it for final discussion if there are any lingering issues in any of the finalized plans that have been submitted from the Planning Board. Any questions or comments for Attorney Mead? Okey-dokey. So the, the decision for the subdivision includes granting of waivers. That list, as was mentioned, there was one additional one added this week, correct?
It, it was, the board vote, the board considered it at the last meeting. It just hadn't made it to the cover of the plan, so it's not an additional waiver.
That's right, yeah, I remember that, sorry. Yeah, okay, so we're not going to vote separately on the waivers. We're including them in the, in the motion to approve the definitive subdivision application for 21 to 27 Hang, whoops, Hancock Street, including the waivers as listed. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Anne.
Thank you, Anne. A second?
MJ.
MJ, thank you. So this is on the subdivision approval. Call roll. Alden?
I recuse myself on this.
Thank you. Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick, oh, sorry, he's not here. MJ?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. And I need another motion to approve the special permit for courts and lanes, and we will take this one together. There are actually two, two parcels here. So we're, we're voting both on 2125 and on 27 Hancock Street for courts and lanes. Do I have a motion?
This is Beth, so moved.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second again, MJ.
MJ, second. And I'll call roll. Alden?
I recuse myself as in a butter.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So you have your approvals, Attorney Mead.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Board. We appreciate your time and consideration on this project.
You're welcome. Let me just comment on the minutes. We received the minutes for the April 21st meeting this afternoon. Obviously not enough time to review them. So they will be on the agenda for our next meeting, as will be the minutes from May 5th. I'm going to hand the meeting over to Andy for discussion of the proposed zoning amendment, as he says on the agenda here, housekeeping and mini reform.
All right, thank you, Chair. So the, the Planning Board members have gotten a copy of the full amendment. Just a little bit of context, and I don't want to make a lengthy meeting. I know some of the boards recently have had some late nights, but it's worth reviewing this. Obviously, you have a zoning hearing coming up to look at this content. We believe in the Office of Planning and Development that some cleanup is needed for some language in the zoning ordinance. And that was priority one for us as part of the zoning rewrite project that we've talked about for years, where we've worked on sections with the original intention of updating the entire ordinance at once. However, that is a very large effort because once you start tinkering with one section, there's discussion about another that it references. And that can go on for quite a while. Some of you may recall different amendments we've spent years on, you know, a year or so on and not necessarily gotten a adoption of something. So say, short-term rental units thus far or waterfront west, you know, of recent years. So there can be time spent on things that are substantive debates, but in this particular instance, we think that most of this package is housekeeping-type language to clean up some ambiguities in the ordinance and make it very clear. One of the things that, and I think Jennifer's with us this evening, one of the things that we've been trying to do is to make sure that, and quite frankly, that her job is easier because the ordinances that she has inherited and coming to this position are, sometimes they're written well and sometimes they're ones that we've inherited from years back. And they're less than clear on a particular matter that we've, you know, discovered over time with the permits to come before us. So as she's doing zoning sign-offs, she can see that there's sometimes language that needs to be clarified. And so we've captured some of those ones in there. So I'll provide a brief overview of what the package includes. But there is in the, there is a quick sort of cheat sheet version in the zoning ad that we had provided to you that shows by section. So I think what might be helpful here, and I think what, what I was planning on doing is just sort of scrolling through a bit. So let me just switch over to that. So this is, again, for all Planning Board members, this is a typical type of format for a city ordinance. Again, just for familiarity, what you're seeing is the city council docket number at the top left or top right. You know, this is an order by the city council to adopt an ordinance. And you see a lot of formality with the whereas language and so forth, providing context. But the substance is really captured in each of the sections that begin with, therefore, let it be ordained that. And it, it goes on to say, and further that. And so each of those sections is, is addressing a particular section of the zoning ordinance where we felt some cleanup was necessary. And we plan on moving, once some variation, if you will, of this package is adopted by the council, we want to see the next package reviewed by the Planning Board and Council as well to, to keep moving along with the rewrite project. So we're initiating that right now by doing some internal drafting of that to bring forward that forward. But this particular one, you can see there's a lot of subsections referenced, but we're really in this section updating definitions. And so again, if there are any questions, we're happy to speak to those. I think the experiences that we've had or where the clarity is needed. But this section is largely about clarifying definitions that we have in the zoning ordinance today. A diagram, for instance, that helps to clarify issues of frontage and setback and so forth. So that's what that first section is addressing. And Chair, if there are any comments from board members, I'm happy to take them as I go.
Yeah, I've got two, on two different definitions, but I'm going to open it to the board members to see if anybody has anything first. I don't like to take over and though I've heard from others.
Sorry, I have two comments. The first is on page one, number five. I'm a little unclear about the definition here that roof includes an awning because there's people who will have, and it says not permanent. So there's obviously retractable awnings that many, you know, some people have. I just, I'm a little unclear as to why we would say the not permanent part.
Yeah, and again, I don't want to speak for the zoning administrator, but I think she's probably the best person to speak to.
The, the section, this is Jennifer. The, the section that you're actually inquiring about is existing language. So I, I have not encountered any issues where that has posed a problem. And therefore, I, I personally had not flagged it as something that needed to be changed. If it is something that someone foresees an issue with, we could certainly look at that. And, and, but as of yet, I have not seen that section pose any issues.
I just, just for myself, this is Andy. I, I would have no objection myself to the Playboard and Council wanted to consider taking out the phrasing of, of, you know, not permanent nature. But again, I'll defer to others on that.
MJ, you want to make your argument? What do you think it should be? Or were you just asking for clarification?
I was really asking for clarification. I think it's odd to consider a temporary awning part of a roof structure. Just seems.
Well, I suppose in most situations it wouldn't be, but South End, now that I'm living here for a while, seems like, you know, it could, could lead to, I don't know, some obstruction of view or something. And so should be considered, you know, if somebody were to leave a temporary awning out all, all summer long and it was in the way of someone's view of the water or something, I don't know. I'm trying to make up a situation where it might be seen as semi-permanent and cause a.
We're talking about zoning, we're not talking about just hanging, hanging laundry in someone's view.
No, and I, sorry, don't mean. Yeah, okay.
And also, it's very ambiguous. What does or similar covering mean? That is extremely ambiguous.
I, I would say that at some point, when you write these ordinances, the very good comment, Leah, and I agree with, to some extent, that that can happen with these ordinances. But at some point, you have to, you know, stop, you know, sort of trying to define things. So unfortunately, we could certainly look to add additional language there. But at the end of the day, I think, given the discussions of the type of range of types of things that people have, it's probably better to leave that broader language so that it really comes down to a question of enforcement at that point rather than trying to overdefine something. It's a, it's a really bad point. But I don't know if we would, you know, end up at the end of the day with additional wording, still the broad covering of things that people might want to include in the roof area, so.
So what you're saying is this is a definition. It's a broad definition. And it can be used to, to more clearly define a situation that would come up. So it gives the zoning administrator room to maneuver.
That's correct. When there's a, you know, this is, this happens when folks, you know, this is, the, the point Leah is, you know, raising is, we always try to add definitions to something. We always try to clarify something and, and, you know, fill holes, if you will, in, in ordinances and regulations. over time, based on what we see. And this is another example of something like that. But if you think about it in the inverse or the flip side of this, out there in the field, and Jennifer could probably speak to this better than I could over, you know, the last couple of years, as she's been reviewing the applications that come in. But people will look for something and will sometimes see something that's a new, you know, item that someone can purchase then install, and it's something we haven't thought of before. And so there's sometimes a need to capture those things in a way that enforcement and compliance can be ensured, even though it may not be the traditional industry standard that we think of, you know, old-school type structure, so.
And MJ, you had, go ahead.
I'm just curious as to the distinction between the exterior and external, and like, what kind of a situation this comes up in.
Actually, if I could speak to that briefly, and then I think Jennifer might want to, I think, actually, we had a discussion with Rick, who couldn't be here today. But I think we've agreed that we need some consistency in the amendment here. There's a couple of places in which exterior and external are referenced. And so we did have a discussion about that, and we agree that there's no need to have any confusion over something like that, if that's the point you were making, so.
So you're going to choose one of those words, right?
Correct. I believe we settled on exterior, so.
Right, okay. MJ, you had something else you wanted to bring up?
On, on page five, and I recall going through this, it has to do with yards and signage. Number five. And I remember talking about this in the zoning advisory committee, having to do with political signs. Is that considered advertising display or other type of sign? Because obviously, we allow those, but we limited the amount or the length of the time, so.
We figured it was temporary.
Yeah, typically, the political signs are treated as temporary signs, but Jennifer, did you want to speak then at all?
Yeah, signs are covered in an entirely different section of the ordinance. This was referring, and therefore, I would apply that section to political signs, and whether they're temporary in nature or not. This section is, if I could, I'm not seeing it on my screen, but I think it's advertising displays. And that had to do with.
For clarity, Jennifer and folks, I've highlighted the section that Jennifer's referencing, which says shall be located in any required front side yard. That's what this section is dealing with, is whether it can be physically placed there.
Right, so this was not referring to a sign, but for a display of goods.
Oh, okay, okay.
And signs would be covered elsewhere, because there is a more specific section to them, and that is, that is generally the way the ordinance works, is where there's a more specific section, you apply that section.
Okay, those are my only two comments.
Anything else on definitions from people? I've got two. We're on page five. I wonder if I have the right page here. Section 6F Yard Requirements and Setbacks. Yep, that's where we are. Number one. No decks extending upward shall be permitted in setback areas. Wait a minute, number one.
Bonnie, I just want to make sure we're looking at the right.
Five, number one. Move up. Yeah, except for fences, walls, accessory structures.
Yeah.
No building or structure, any above-grade portion, including without limitations, decks shall be permitted within the required front side or rear setback. And yet, there was, and that seems to conflict with number 50, which says a yard, blah, 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 may project, unroofed deck may project into applicable yard setbacks. So that's where the problem is. This one, F1 conflicts with the definition on page four of a yard, allowing unroofed decks possibly, as in may, project into the applicable yard setback. So isn't there going to be a complication there if those two conflict?
I'm just looking at the language here that proposed. Oh, you know what? I think this is actually, you could point your raise, because frankly, this actually, Jennifer may want to speak to this, we had talked a little bit about whether or not we put a standard into a definition versus putting it into a a dimensional, you know, setback section of the ordinance. And Jennifer, I don't know if you wanted to speak to that at all, but this language could also be placed in a section like that and then reconciled. I don't know if Jennifer wanted to speak to the substance of the conflict.
I am, forgive me, but I'm not seeing specifically the language that Bonnie was referencing. I don't know if it's on the screen or not.
It is. I don't know if you're able to flip your zoom view, but it is.
Let me just, I could leave it with you to compare the definition 50.
I think, I think that would be best, and if we can identify a specific conflict, we will, or, you know, or eliminate a conflict, we could tweak that as we move forward with this process, and I welcome these questions.
Okay, so compare definition 50 for yard with, on page four, to page five, Roman numeral six dash F, number one, about yard requirements, and see if there's a conflict there, and if there's a way, because even if you put what might be seen here as a standard into a dimensional table, it may lead to problems. So look at the wording of both of those.
Agreed.
Thank you. And then it goes back to something that MJ picked up with the evergreen impervious surface. It's the first time I've seen swimming pools shall be considered impervious areas, because the definition in 33 for open space is the one we've had forever, that has never made sense to me, that allows swimming pools to be considered part of the open space. And I'm wondering if we can deal with the swimming pool issue right here under this definition and remove it.
And again, I'm Jennifer, I don't know, I'm happy, I always agree with the idea of cleaning up language and making things consistent. I don't know if Jennifer wants to speak to the.
I don't find that inconsistent. I think that's a little bit more of a a conversation where people need to discuss, not just, you know, maybe council members want to discuss whether or not a pool is considered to be part of the open yard in the way that people use it. The impervious comment has to do with stormwater recharge and that kind of thing. So we're really talking apples to oranges here. One has to do with the perception and use of space, and one is a stormwater term having to do with impervious material. And because it's full of water, and it only is able to absorb a certain amount of more water, it is considered impervious.
I understand the distinction, and I withdraw my question. Not an issue, because it's used for here, it's about open space use, and it says active and passive recreation, so that's fine.
Definition work. Thank you.
All right. But when it comes to discussion of impervious surfaces for future reference, we need to be careful about swimming pools. Okay, sorry. Again, anyone else? Last chance on definitions before Andy moves on.
I had a question, just on page four, there's additional language about in the agricultural conservation district. And I guess I just, I just wondered, there's that, that on the bottom of page four, where the letter D, you're adding that language, and it talks about the minimum lot size shall be 400,000 square feet. I was just curious, I assume all the existing ones are grandfathered in, so I just wondered, you know, how applicable is this? What is there remaining?
Yeah, this is Andy, if I could speak to that. This is a suggested language. I suggest this language be added to the ordinance to, I just want to flip to the zoning map to show you for context, and I figure this is a question that would come up, and I think it's really important as we think about remaining buildout area in the city, what is possible for developers to do, and whether or not we want that to happen in certain areas. If you look at the green areas in this map, this is the agricultural conservation zoning district. So this is really the outlying areas where you'd want to preserve agricultural land, amongst other things, open space, of course, as, you know, as we think of it. You know, if you don't believe in supporting farms, at least I think we'd all agree that preserving open space, you know, for passive purposes is beneficial, right? So, and I think a lot of you here agree with the presenting nature. So the long story short is we have a large, you know, buildout area of the city in the middle, but we have these outlying green areas where we have agricultural conservation zoning. And I think it was following the Evergreen project, but there was a zoning change adopted a couple of years back to change the lot size requirement in those green areas, agricultural conservation areas, where we have a lot of, you know, farmland, undeveloped areas still remaining, that could be built out as residential subdivisions, for instance. That what we would want to do is convert that to a larger lot size requirement, thereby ensuring that those lot, those areas are not carved up into smaller lots. So that was proposed at a 400,000 square foot requirement, and which is roughly nine acres. And so the, there have actually been some inquiries from developers of late suggesting they don't like that, and they want some flexibility to have something a little more dense, like your traditional subdivision, and I'm not convinced that's in the city's interest. But, but at any rate, my concern here, and the reason why I suggest this language is I think there's clearly a purpose behind that acreage requirement, as it was adopted by the council a couple of years back. But the, I know from case law that I've reviewed, that, that it's better to have a defensible language in the ordinance for any provision in there where possible, especially where something might be perceived as running in conflict with case law. So for instance, we, oftentimes, I have oftentimes heard developers cite reference to case law in Massachusetts, where they've seen three acre, you know, requirements being held up, but maybe not something higher than that. I'm not convinced that the case law they're referencing is the end-all-be-all, and I believe there are others as well who share my opinion. You see that there are three council sponsors for this amendment. But bottom line is, I think it's worth defending the acreage requirement and preserving farmland. And I think that that would be upheld by the court if, and I think with the benefit of this language in the ordinance, it would help to defend that, should there be question about why that requirement is in the ordinance in the first place. So that's the reason why it's suggested here, to your question about grandfathering, you're right, you know, existing lots would be grandfathered, of course, but the intent here is that if someone wants to, you know, create a billable lot, you know, and or carve things up, they have to comply with this, which gives us a better ability to make sure we're preserving those agricultural conservation areas, as was the intended land use policy, I guess. Does that help at all?
Yep, yes, thank you. Yeah, I assume it's mostly the areas in the, sort of, the west and adjacent to 95 is really where we're talking, right?
That's correct, that's correct, yeah. And, you know, we could, it's interesting, I mean, I'm happy to do at some point a sort of a more detailed review of those, you know, era photographs and whatnot of the remaining pieces. But, you know, this, this is just one tool in our toolbox to preserve remaining open space in undeveloped areas in the city, not the least of which is, you know, for actual farming purposes.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Okay, Andy, you can move on.
Okay, so the next section, and again, there might be some questions on this too, I think we hit a couple, but there's the yards setbacks requirement or section, so, sorry, let me just switch my document here. So the next section after definitions was the yard section, and so we talked about a couple of these pieces. I don't know if there's any questions on this, but again, it's generally speaking, and we have talked to Rick about a couple of language adjustments, we've talked to Bonnie about a couple of things. And then there may be some other suggestions that folks have, and we're more than happy to incorporate things that, you know, that help to clean things up or clarify something, if someone's noticed something we haven't. But generally speaking, we're just trying to clean up language in here, so that there's consistency in how the ordinance is applied, and there aren't questions or disputes between folks about what the ordinance intends. So again, I'm happy to expand on that, if there's any questions about it, but that's what that section is doing, and there's a long list of things as a subset of that, so that's why you're seeing that long bullet list. And again, I'll keep going unless there's questions.
Yeah, that's a good way to do it.
Okay, next section is about exceptions to maximum height requirements. So, you know, there's some places you'll see, the way that we're drafting these ordinances, I had used a slightly different format in the past. Council argument, who's drafted some amendments in recent years, has used a slightly different format, which I like. And it's one where we essentially repeat the entire ordinance as it is today in the amendment, but block off those pieces that are either removed or underline those ones that are being added. And that makes it very clear for folks, it's a little harder sometimes to read ones that are shorter, because you can't see their existing language in comparison. So in this instance, you're not seeing very much change in this one. But it's, it's just clarifying a reference to another section, so I don't know if there's any questions about that, but. Traffic visibility across corners, this section right here was really because there are a couple of instances that arose where there's questions about folks who have, you know, essentially obstructions, fences or other obstructions at corners, and where it might intersect with a roadway or driveway, and we want to make sure that things are safe. So this gives the ability to make sure that there's a clear line of sight there, if you will. Again, all zoning provisions, you know, come with the aspect of grandfathering, but this is to give some ability to make sure that on a go-forward basis, people don't create situations that are safety hazards. So in this case, there's a review and confirmation and coordination with the city engineer and the zoning administrator. I'm often involved with those issues, the DBS staff are often involved, there's sometimes a traffic safety advisory committee meeting about issues like this. And the board may see applications for things and want to know that these setbacks are conformed with, so that, you know, visibility is preserved for safety purposes, at least. So that's what that section is really about, and, you know, and again, we hope that this will help to resolve the formality of how that is complied with by referencing the, who's reviewing it and who's signing off on it. The next section is about clarifying that in the downtown overlay district is sort of an exception. You can have awnings elsewhere, but we wanted to make sure in this downtown overlay district that you have to go to that section to see where the requirements are, because we do have a more sensitive ordinance for the downtown that puts some powers and controls, both in terms of design standards, but also for the planning board to do special permit reviews for facade changes and things like that. So there is some staff level review for things like that, but we wanted to make sure that there was a clear reference for the downtown overlay district, which has that exception, that that was called out here. So I think, I don't know, Jennifer, feel free to jump in at any point if you want, but we're just clarifying that. This next section here, long story short, this is just cleaning up some language in the ordinance about the positions of the zoning administrator. There's a reference to the building commissioner elsewhere in here, and it's just, really just housekeeping language about the way that the position is appointed and so forth. You know, sometimes these staff positions are called out in the generic or general city ordinance. And in this case, the zoning ordinance clarifies what this position is, its importance, of course, and, you know, how the appointment happens. So at any rate, this is just consistency and.
I do have a question here, Andy.
Sure.
I'm curious why it says in the middle, pursuant to the City of Newburyport Home Rule Charter, the mayor shall appoint and the city council may confirm. Why is it may confirm?
Because the council doesn't, we can't say the council shall confirm, we could say shall confirm, but the bottom line is, they have the choice to confirm or not with all the appointments, so the mayor has to appoint in order for something to be mobilized for appointment, but the council has that at their discretion, whether they want to approve that. So we could put in, you know, shall, but I don't think that would necessarily run into a problem.
Is this, is this different from other appointments? I mean, this is an employee as opposed to volunteer boards, where the city council, I don't even know what the language says in there for.
Yeah, this is very consistent, actually, so for, you know, most positions, this is the process for board members, for staff of, you know, most positions, you know, that aren't, you know, lower-level positions. They are, you know, appointed by the mayor and then confirmed by the city council, and I think a lot of you have seen that, whether you've come in or been reappointed. And Bonnie, you've provided, appointed more time.
Right, but, but, but does that mean the city council could object, and the mayor could appoint over their objection?
No, the mayor, that doesn't give the, this language doesn't give the mayor the ability to appoint someone else, you know, overriding them, but it does essentially, and this is not atypical of any position, really, it gives the ability for just the council to have some discussion about that person that's, you know, being put in that position with, again, is not atypical.
Well, if it's consistent, I'll drop my concern, but I, it just, that may in there sounded pretty loose and left the city council
Feel free to bring that up.
Advisory position, but not, you know, I'm not, I'm not worried about it, I'm just surprised city council hasn't jumped all over it, and they may do. I'll leave it to them if they want it stronger.
Sure, I know, it's a good question. I think at the hearing will be a good time, because we'll have a couple of councils there, they can weigh in as to whether or not they want to tweak the language, or whether they prefer it for any reason the way it is.
Well, I promise not to bring it up. I just crossed it off my list. Okay. If you're talking, Andy, we can't hear you. Oh, you're muted. That's why.
Oh, my apologies. Yeah, sorry. Reflex. So at any rate, this next section is dealing with the billing inspector and the zoning administrator. Again, this is language that is really just cleaning up language that's already in the ordinance. Changing a couple of, you know, capitalized, formalized positions that we have in the city. So not really, you can see we're not really touching much of the language that substance of just cleaning up capitalization and whatnot. There are, this, this section was really tinkered some years back when the zoning administrator position was created. So we're just making sure those things are, you know, consistent.
Can you stop at three? I am really surprised that there is no reference to electronic files. It still reads like paper all over the place, and I don't see anything that allows for electronic submission. I don't know if it should be under three or somewhere else.
If I'm not mistaken, and I do agree with that in concept, I do want to make sure I a hundred percent agree. We should take a look at the language one more time collectively, but I, our intention here was to account for both paper and electronic. And as we're in the process right now, and Jennifer knows this, we're in the process of transferring everything to online permitting. And you've seen that certainly zoning board of appeals has seen it thus far with some of the online applications. We'll make a reference when we post the documents to an open gov website where our permitting is. At any rate, we were, when we talked with Counselor Agaman about this language, we wanted to make sure we were accounting for both paper and electronic versions. And part of the reason we settled on permanent files for each application is because there are sometimes multiple files set up, whether it's a special permit or a variance and so forth. So we did intend to cover both, and really we certainly are trying to head in the direction of everything being electronic for the most part. Even where there are some paper things required by, you know, statute or whatnot. But we agree in concept and we can double check that language, but we, we did intend with this to capture both electronic and paper quote records, which is the language used here.
Okay. I would like to add that to Jennifer's list. A second thing from me anyway, to review the language and make it more clear somehow that electronic filing is is, well, whatever you decide it is, if it's required or, but it should be more than just permanent files. Because this, if you're cleaning it up, why don't you just clean it up for that as well?
Point taken, and the planning office will take that into consideration.
We do, we will. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy, you've turned yourself off again.
Oh, apologies. I'll just leave it on. So apologies, this next section is dealing with the, the permits section. My concern that I was trying to address here was there occasionally we see folks try to poke holes in something, whether it's the regulations or a process that we follow. And what I wanted to make very clear here was that anybody who's submitting an application needs to submit all the materials that are required and they need to make it complete and comprehensive. So it's clear for staff, they need to figure out what to do with it. And board members that need to review that for a hearing. And some of you may be familiar with the term constructive approval, or, you know, the, the shot clock running when the application is filed, we have to hold a hearing in so many days and make a decision in so many days. So irrespective of whether it's the planning board or the ZBA, we wanted to make sure our staff level review, which is certain things are under this ordinance are allowed by staff level review, we wanted to make sure that it's very clear in the ordinance that there's no question here when an application form requires something for a board or a staff member to review that substantive request, so we can make sure it's compliant and then they're therefore approve or reject or send it to a board. We have all the materials that are required. So you wouldn't want the clock running on an application considered complete, quote, complete, if it doesn't have all those materials. And just because there's been a one or two instances in which that's arisen as a question of some sort, I wanted to make that very clear. So this language I suggested adding just to make that clear for essentially staff and boards collectively in one paragraph. The next section, this is just consistency with state law. The, the statute was updated to allow a three year term for special permits and so forth. So we, we didn't see any reason to be inconsistent nor to have a shorter timeframe. So we're just matching that. This next section is an existing section about performance standards. And there's not a lot of language being changed in here, but in this, there's a second paragraph after this. This really talks about when an application comes in, the fact that there are a, essentially a peer review of that might be called for by the zoning administrator, the inspector of buildings, because we want to make sure that it doesn't exceed the performance standards that we have in our ordinance that might cause problems. So there is on the, the second page or the next page of this, there's some language that it makes a reference to. And again, I, I have not seen this section used, and I think Jennifer may say the same, but it gives some latitude for the city council with advice from the planning board and the zoning administrator to look into a situation in which, you know, where we essentially call for a peer review into something that doesn't meet performance standards. I haven't seen this provision used in the time that I've been here. And frankly, I think this is largely the, the process that would be followed anyway. If we saw something that we felt like was questionable performance standards, we would end up, you know, looking to have either a peer review of that done by a consultant or ourselves, depending on the issue involved. So, you know, I, I have no problem with the language per se, you know, being in there. If this is the policy you want to have, you know, clearly call out in the ordinance, but if we think or the zoning administrator thinks, the billing commissioner thinks that something is exceeding a performance standard for, you know, emissions or something like that, then, you know, a nuisance of some type, this just basically clarifies that process and says that they can call for that review. So again, an existing section. The adoption and amendment section. Just a little bit of cleanup in here. There's some capitalization in there. I had made a clarification in here. There was some question there about the, just for clarity and context, in case it comes up with the zoning hearing, the, the, there was a question asked by one of the city councils, at least in the last year, about whether or not zoning amendments could originate from anyone other than the city councillors. And that's because there's a, a requirement in the rules that all ordinances be sponsored by a counselor in order to be on their docket. And I think that the bottom line here is, you know, we defer to KP Law on, on the legal interpretation here, but bottom line is the state statute zoning act overrides here and says that there are certain things, certain folks who can propose zoning amendments, and they're basically summarized in this paragraph here. You know, capturing what's in, in the state zoning act locally in our zoning. So this just clarifies for folks who can propose zoning changes, you know, from a formal basis. And so just to be clear, there's a reason why the state statute suggests that the planning board weigh in on, you know, zoning changes that might affect long, long range planning issues for the city. And, and there's a reason why it might make sense for the planning board or the zoning board of appeals, or even folks owning property to propose a zoning change, you know, for some reason. So at any rate, we'll leave the question of sponsorship to the council, but this just clarifies consistent with state law that there are various folks who can propose those amendments. You know, again, we have a, I'm sorry, yes.
Before you leave that first paragraph, in addition to who can propose it, I'm curious about the last sentence.
Yes.
Which says, the city council shall within 14 days of receipt of such zoning ordinance or change, submitted to the planning board for review. And then the next chapter goes, and the next paragraph goes directly into joint public hearing. What I am looking for and what I, what other planning board members I believe have felt some frustration with is something that, and I know this may not be in state statute, which you've based this language on, something in here that allows for us to review it outs before, after it's been submitted, but before it goes to a joint public hearing.
Okay. And if I'm not mistaken, I mean, I guess in essence, if I'm not mistaken, this is sort of what we're doing right now, right, is a, we could reference it, we could call that out in here and clarify that, but I, I think in essence, is that not what we're doing right now, which is reviewing with the plan what as a whole, after the council's got the proposed amendment, whatever it may be, and whoever may have proposed it, reviewing it so that there's some prep for a larger zoning hearing that might take.
This is a good example. It does not always happen. There are nights when, you know, you bring something up in a planning board meeting saying, hey, this is going to be a, a proposed amendment. One of the, you know, this is the sponsor and we need a date for a joint public hearing. And it's usually, you know, the next meeting or something, and we haven't had a chance to review it on our own. So there we are asking questions and having a discussion in a setting of a joint public hearing when it would have been much better like we are tonight to eliminate some of the questions for clarification or fine tuning what we'd like to bring to the joint public hearing.
Right.
This last sentence just says, you know, as of the submission, 14 days, within 14 days of it, it has to be submitted to planning board for review. But it doesn't say that we have then a period of time to review it before the joint public hearing.
Right. Right. Now that's true. No, I guess bottom line is there's, there's always based on the scheduling and record, the requirements for notice in the paper 14 days, and then the few days before the paper needs in order to get it in. You know, there, there's always going to be a period of time there in which you're pretty much always going to have plenty, one or more planning board meetings between when the ordinance amendment goes in and when we actually hold the hearing. We could try to add language in here, but I, I wouldn't recommend that. I would recommend that we actually just as a, as a procedure, always do that at the next available meeting, planning board meeting, review that content that's been submitted so that whenever that hearing is scheduled, which is clearly going to be weeks out based on advertisement, that we have an ability to do that, as you suggest. But my only concern is that if we put it in here, there's, we have to run, there's, there's, if we try to pin down exactly what that would be, it becomes hard then to figure out what's the meeting day going to be. Do we have to say, is it within so many days? We could say, you know, planning board, you know, who shall review it the earliest possible convenience or something. But I think in essence, it's more of a practice that we should follow, which is you're a hundred percent right to point out, but I think we should, we should just do that on a go forward basis.
Is anybody else? Does anyone else have any comments on this?
I have a comment about on the second paragraph, the beginning of the third line.
I'm sorry, is it the location again?
The second paragraph.
Okay.
Well, no, go up. Sorry. So it's the first, the ordinance shall, and then the adoption or change of this ordinance. I'm curious why the by was changed to a two. It seems to me a by would still make sense there.
Sorry, we're seeing, where you're seeing by.
To the city council of the proposed zoning ordinance or change.
Right. To the city council, right?
But is this? I feel like it should be by the city council, by the zoning board of appeals, by a person. Aren't these all the people that can submit the proposed.
Oh, I, I see what you're saying. Yes. No, I agree with that. Yeah, I, I'm sorry. So we see what you're saying. Yep. Agreed. Thank you. Address that. Yep.
And I guess they're all buys, I think. I don't know that it needs to be repeated every time, but.
Got it. Understood. Thank you for pointing that out. Clearly a screwdriver there, but thank you. Okay. I don't know if there's any other questions in that one, but again, this is just making consistency with 40A, the zoning act. There's some old language we have in the ordinance referencing the, the previous name of a city, state department and so forth. So we're just matching that. Same thing with, and I, I was confused by Mr. Law, which you made the comment a moment ago about the, the, the two or the by. I was actually looking at the, the bottom portion of that paragraph. I was confused because that section there where it says two members of the regional planning agency is not in the zoning act. And so we had that old language. It didn't make any sense to have it inconsistent. It's really just from the regional planning agency. So at any rate, all we're doing in this section is just cleaning up the language. Now, this, this section here, I just want to note this for your recognition or reminder, there, there was a housing choice act that was adopted earlier in January of this year. And in essence, this purpose was to encourage the creation of housing. We can just debate and dispute to the end of time, you know, what mechanism should be used to do that and what's the right tools and what, you know, carrot versus stick and so forth. But the legislature adopted some changes to various different, you know, acts and programs and so forth. And one of the changes that was done in that was to the zoning act. And so essentially what was changed in there was, for this particular area was one of the thresholds for zoning changes to be adopted by the city council, if it involves, in essence, in concept, there's some details which I don't know that we want to go into the weeds over, but in essence, if there is a zoning change that is going to allow or encourage housing, you know, in a certain way, that it will only require a majority vote of the city council, right? So you wouldn't have to reach the typical under Massachusetts two thirds rule in order to get the zoning change adopted. So for all, you know, other changes, it's still a two thirds vote by the council, but if you're going to do something that might stimulate housing and there's, we could subdivide that to go into further bullets as to what that is. And I think perhaps in another meeting, we should do that. But as we think about zoning changes going forward, there are some places where, for instance, a 40R district, a so-called smart growth district, which is adopted under another statute, that is an as of right district. So if you comply with the standards, generally you, you should be getting an approval from the planning board. That was also adopted by the legislature in order to encourage a certain type of development with a streamlined process. So in essence, all communities are in this, there's no opt in to this statutory provision or change. But what it essence says is that zoning, some zoning changes, ones that have to, really might stimulate, you know, multifamily housing and things like that can be done by a majority vote as opposed to a two thirds vote. So it lowers the bar for passage, which is sometimes a difficult, you know, bar. The other change that was made in parallel with that was for permits that are issued. You know, a special permit being issued, if that special permit involves similar content, essentially the, it would encourage or create, you know, multifamily housing following certain, you know, parameters. That also is only a, some over majority, simple majority vote of the applicable board. So it's just like the legislative body, the council adopting ordinances that bar has been reduced for the, the voting threshold by the planning board, for instance, or the ZBA. So at any rate, that's in essence, I, I point that out because the except as otherwise provided in 40F general laws. That's because our existing language, as you can see, you know, unmarked up says two thirds vote. That's the typical in Massachusetts. And then the, the additional language is just clarifying there's a reference to 40A. I think that's the better way of doing it rather than trying to re paraphrase what's in the, the act, because one, I'm not sure if all that will stay exactly as it is, you know, you know, in perpetuity. But also because I don't think we want to expand ourselves necessarily too wide. So I think it's good to just leave it to the extent that the legislature, the state legislature changed it. And then we can go over that in more detail if you want, but in essence, this is just clarifying that there is a recent change done in the state act that allows a lower than two thirds vote for the zoning changes or special permits and things when it's related to housing. I don't know. It can be a confusing error if you read the actual bill. But so we'll be talking about that. When we talk about zoning amendments going forward, we'll be having discussions in those contexts about whether or not it's actually only going to require a majority or a two thirds vote by the council. Some things may have a lower bar and therefore become easier to pass. In this, these two sections here at the bottom, Federal Street Overlay District and the top of the next page, Toll Complex. We're really just deleting sections that are no longer used in the ordinance. Those were two special overlay districts created to redevelop particular properties, large, you know, areas of concern for the city. There's a difference between that and spot zoning, in case anybody's wondering. But at any rate, those districts have already been developed in accordance with those ordinances. And so that being the case, we thought it would make more sense to allow those folks to be remaining in compliance with their approvals. And if there's any nonconformances or variances or things that are needed in the future, those we looked at in context as they might be looked at today. You know, rather than having to keep that whole section in the ordinance when no one will really effectively be using that whole section for initial permitting, the way it was needed for the original developments. And again, that's partly because as we adopt ordinances over time, the ordinance itself, the zoning ordinance has ballooned, right? We've, you know, I actually have, I have a collection of some zoning ordinances that I've collected over the years from different communities, but zoning ordinance or bylaws used to be very short documents, you know, a couple of pages. And, and they have ballooned over time to address a very different issues. And so this is just taking out some pages that may no longer be necessary. We've done that a couple of times. The next section, and there's, there's a lengthy section of these, but a lot of this is dealing with the, the procedure and criteria sections in the, the demolition control overlay district and the downtown overlay district. So at any rate, in this particular section, we're talking about the fact that there's the ability for the special permit granting authority, in this case, we're talking about the ZBA, to approve the moving of a historic building or structure from one portion of a lot to another, regardless of where the receiving lot is located. This was really, I think, and Jennifer may want to speak to it, but to provide, I think, a little more flexibility for. regardless of where the receiving lot is located. This was really, I think, and Jennifer may want to speak to it, but to provide, I think, a little more flexibility for relocation, again, subject to special permit granting authority approval. So there's this board review of it. But it wouldn't prohibit the relocation of, of something when it, it might salvage that particular structure and provide a viable use for it in another location.
Yes, that's it. It was just to provide flexibility, but does not force the board into making such rulings.
I wouldn't say there's any substantive changes after that in here per se. Yeah, there's really no substance of changes left in that piece. Here's some cleanup in language. The, this one, I'm sorry. Was there a question? Okay. In this section at the bottom of the page that you're seeing, references the special permit granting authority engaging a consultant. My concern here was just making sure that the board had, again, trying to look from the city's perspective and protect the public interest, making sure that the board has as much latitude as possible to hire a consultant, rather than be limited to the language originally adopted that said no later than ten calendar days after opening the required public hearing. That seemed potentially problematic, given the lead times or things can take and questions that can arise about something like that. So I wanted to make sure that you have the process, the ability throughout your process to do that. So at any rate, that's what that does. Again, just clarifying language at the top of that page, nothing I think worth noting. This section, I think, is worth noting, and it's particularly important right now. Some of you may be aware of, you know, not just the litigation over the institution for savings expansion, but there's also an appeal and a variance application now with the zoning board of appeals dealing with the question of whether or not a downtown business can have an operable set of windows, replace the windows with operable windows. In this case, there's sort of a conflict there policy wise and regulation wise with preserving a historic, you know, facade or window or element, whatever that may be, whatever the content is, whatever the association is, protecting that element and allowing a change of some type of physical change. In essence, the blacked out language that says mode of operation, the original language in this section of the ordinance actually prohibits outright the change, any change in the mode of operation of a window, in this case, the entire downtown area. That I think is, I'll just speak for myself, and Jennifer, you may want to land, but speaking for myself, I do have, I started with an urban design background as well, and I do care about the urban environment. So while I do think historic preservation is a key thing for the city of Newburyport, including the downtown, I don't think it's beneficial to downtown to outright prohibit changes of mode of operation when we might have operable windows on a storefront that might then convert to, say, you know, outdoor seating with a restaurant, you know, something like that. Because generally speaking, that's going to activate the streetscape. There are some benefits to that. We've seen a little bit of that with the so-called parklets, you know, on State Street. You can, we can sort of debate pros and cons, but I think there's a benefit to having activation of a facade into the streetscape in certain instances. So this does not make it a allowance as of right, but what it does do is it gives the ability, at least for the special permit granting authority, the planning board, to allow an operable window or operable windows if, if it's proposed. And so whereas right now, the ordinance actually ties the board's own hands and says, you as a board can't even approve something like that. For, and again, assuming there are no questions further going down, a lot of this next part is really just addressing demolition of, of structures in the demolition control overlay district. And, and clarifying how we essentially calculate things. The thing I would note about this, and Jennifer may want to land this as well, but the piece I think that's, this is one that is worth reading and thinking about, maybe before the hearing and just thinking about in general. But although the ZBA deals with this issue more frequently in the demolition control overlay district, the question of what we're preserving and how we go about it in the demolition control overlay district comes down a little bit to what's referenced or captured in this, in this markup section. The, for those of you who might have followed the twelve Harrison Street project that, you know, last couple of years is taking on some time. They went to the zoning board of appeals, in essence, and we can go over the details, but in concept, they got approvals for what is essentially a modification of the existing structure to raise the roof and essentially put on a new exterior, new siding, new windows, new trim and so forth. So the public was going to see a new building essentially from the outside, even though some of the shell or the framing, if you will, might have been preserved. And in essence, what, what that case kind of boiled down to was is that the ordinance, the way it's written, preserves not just the siding that's on the exterior, although siding can be removed and replaced, right, in kind, you can replace your siding. If you're going to remove that siding and you're going to remove the sheeting or the wood framing, all of those three elements can be part of what is considered demolition in that district, meaning it could be cumulatively added up to trigger the threshold for review in that district, the entire demolition control overlay district. Whereas the ordinance, I think, as originally drafted, is not 100% clear in the language. It's, it's, if you're an attorney, I think you can read it and figure it out. But it's, it's less than 100% clear to the average person reading it. And I, for one, think that ordinances should be legible to the layperson, if at all possible. So they don't need to pay an attorney to figure out what the requirements are. So I think that's a benefit here to all of us. And I think in particular to where there's, I won't say vagueness, but there's a, where gaps were basically KP law had to fill in with a clarification of how it should be interpreted and applied. And in, in essence, if there was further litigation or dispute, the courts would make a determination, right, how to fill in the gap absent an amendment by the council. So this is intended to basically give clearer language in the ordinance about which portions of demolition of an exterior wall come into play. I don't have up tonight a diagram, but Jennifer, I have looked at a diagram that she put together, which we're going to refine. But in essence, it shows which types of parts of the exterior, parts of a building might be called out for demolition. So if you're going to remove or cover up a whole section with a new building addition, that's demolition of that facade because it's no longer an exterior wall. If you're going to, you know, remove a window, how does that play in, you know, et cetera. So I won't go into it in length right now, but Jennifer may want to offer something only because she's seen more of these over time. The one oddity that I would mention, though, and handing it over to her if she wants to say anything, is just that the oddity that I see in the demolition control overlay district with, with this sort of edit kind of points out is that in the case of twelve Harrison Street, which kind of stuck out in my mind, was the board of appeals had, in essence, already approved the new exterior. And that was, and when that happened and that work was stopped there on that project, it was because they had actually removed some of the framing underneath that was also preserved by the ordinance. And that's what this language here is clarifying. It's basically codifying the legal opinion that we got from KP law about how this ordinance should be interpreted and provides greater clarity. So the, the interesting thing that happened with twelve Harrison Street in that instance was that that was the first instance in which we had everything boiling down to just the framing, because the exterior had really already been approved. The new siding, new trim, new windows, a new roof height, you know, elevation of, I think, a few feet was being added. So there were modifications being done. So there were a lot of things being changed there. Ostensibly, everything the public was going to see. And the volume, of course, was part of the original structures in there underneath. So because that was the first one in my mind, I think that really, I can think of it really substantively and really forcefully pointed out that the framing is also protected. I point that out mainly because I know that in adopting the district and having seen debates in prior years about the local historic district, there was a lot of discussion about preserving, right, the not demolishing historic structures and, and not losing them. But there was also this sort of balancing act and sort of policy debate as to whether, how far we should go. Do we need to have design standards? How much is going to be reviewed here? And are we going to review things inside the structures versus just the outside that the public sees? So not taking a stance here one way or the other, but just note the fact that this, this language is actually clarifying that the current ordinance with additional clarity does protect the framing as well. So if you wanted to see greater flexibility for folks to replace, you know, the historic framing underneath with something that's maybe, you know, newer or more solid, that this would be the section of this, you know, the area in which that comes into play. Other than that, I just, I just point that out because it's a sort of an interesting area of balancing between historic preservation and the sort of public and private, you know, wrestling over who should have rights and control over the inside of a structure.
Yeah, I, I don't particularly have anything to add. I think Andy has put it out there that this really is codifying and clarifying some of the confusion or ambiguity that our, our city solicitor has recently outlined and interpreted for us. So if, if there is substantive conversation as to whether this is the right interpretation, that's something different. But, but this language hopefully does make clear to the average, average person reading the ordinance, what the intent is.
Yeah. And again, following up on that, there's language at the bottom of that paragraph and then going on to the next edit that, you know, this is really just making it clear that the zoning administrator, rightfully so, and the building commissioner can call for, you know, drawings or diagrams to clarify compliance, right, and make sure that things are dimensioned properly, that they're not taking advantage of areas they shouldn't in the calculations. So just to clarify that, make it very obvious. Yeah, this again, this, that same language about moving the structure, this, we sort of parallel language in the DOD and the demolition control overlay district or the ability, at least for the special permit granting authority, to allow the moving of a structure.
That, in that last one, doesn't it say, in the very last added part, it says demolition, it doesn't say anything about moving in that one. Don't you intend moving?
I do, actually. I think I agree with that. And Jennifer, if we could concur, I think we agree that that we're missing maybe a word or two in there if we want to.
We, we had discussed that there, there, the language in this was typed in error, and we need to, we need to adjust it to reflect our intent.
Yeah, I think, and I, Jennifer and I had some minutes on this. We went back and forth with council argument. There are various different versions. So it's possible that something in the acceptance of word markup changes, something got deleted accidentally. So, but we agree that that will be added and adjusted. Thank you for pointing that out. So that, that's in essence, a summary of what's in the amendment.
Andy, just for the record, that took an hour, and that was only us. And I would highly recommend that you not go through all the sections, but provide maybe a chart that says, you know, that points out the ones that have substantive changes that you've learned from us tonight, maybe.
Agree 100%. I actually will do a couple of slides.
Going through this whole thing, I mean, have this available in case someone says definition of X. I don't, the wording has to change, then you can pull it up. But there's got to be a way to get through the material at a much higher level and allow for discussion on those things that people are really hot under the collar about.
Agreed.
I, I just don't want to see you scrolling through this text on the joint public.
Oh, no, agreed. Yeah, I'll be doing a quick, a couple of slides to summarize, like you said, because I don't want to go through the, you know, little verbiage changes, which aren't really substantive, but I do want to call out the substantive pieces of note.
Right. So you might want to do a slide presentation so that everybody knows what's in there. Well, you'll figure it out. And then go back when people have questions. Do it whatever way you want, but it's got to be.
That's what I'm.
I'm glad this was a dry run for you because, as I say, it's just us, and we hardly had anything to say. And I promise you, the counselors will have more to say. And it's a joint public hearing, so there's going to be public comment as well. I don't know what that agenda looks like right now, but if we have anything more on it, it better be just a little something because it'll be easily two hours on this.
Understood. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from other people that might be helpful to getting through this at the joint public hearing? Okay. Thank you, everybody, for going through that with us. One update from me. Congratulations, everybody. Six C has been adopted formally, officially done. Anything coming in from now on comes in under the new amendment. And we don't know what Hancock will do, if I can read some of your minds anyway. She didn't say anything tonight. She hinted at the zoning board after, what was it, three and a half or four hours of discussion? It was unbelievably long meeting on this one topic, that she might consider it and will look at it if she does. But she wanted to get these special permits and the, of Courtland Lane in order to provide the groundwork, literally, to then be able to do two separate structures or one big one on one or both. I believe I heard her intimate that it would probably be only on twenty seven where the historic structure is. So we may be considering something that would be relevant to what we talked about at the latter part of this, these changes that Andy was talking about. So that's just a little preview. That's all I have for updates. Andy, do you have anything?
Just one, two things real brief. One is just a reminder, I think we sent this information to you, but there's two meetings that we think you might be interested in attending or following up on afterwards. If you can't, the video will be made. Plum Island and Silver Rise, I just saw on the flyer for this that summarizes the link to the website at the bottom. We sent this out to all the members. We've tried to distribute as widely as possible as soon as the dates were nailed down by the consultants. They are working for the town of Newbury, but because we share the island, the idea with this grant that was given by the state for the consultants to do their, you know, project was essentially to show the silver rise, you know, on the horizon, essentially in the coming decades. And then to do at least some framework for the fiscal impacts that that will have on the communities as we look forward. Because we'll see more of the erosion or more of the inundation in different areas, including the Palm Island Turnpike being inundated several times a day in, in future decades. So with that sort of projection coming in from engineers and, and those folks, we want to make sure we're planning in advance. And this project was initially by the town of Newbury to have consultants start that dialogue, if you will, amongst the communities. And that's what these two meetings are really about. So we, as soon as we found the dates out, we send them out. But go to the meetings if you can. There's actually not a need to register. They originally had it set up that way, and we asked them to change that because it's less public or less convenient for the public anyway. So, so they've adjusted that. So attend those if you can, I think. And I think the maps, I think, are the most useful thing. The fiscal impact analysis is really a sort of a conceptual framework in my mind, because it's not something that was detailed. It was sort of a broad brush look at it. But I think it does show that there's growing fiscal impacts to the communities by the Silver Rise impacts themselves, the flooding and the inundation that will happen. So it's basically putting that out on everybody's radar, and I think it'd be good to be aware of what those maps show. The other thing I just wanted to give is a reminder about the executive session that we have with the council on Monday. I think we need just a simple majority if we can. But we need to discuss the litigation, and this is an opportunity to just have me with KP law. So I just wanted to remind you that there's two links. One is the executive session, one is the general public where we vote to go into executive session. So just remember which one is which when you go in there.
So, and can you confirm the time of that?
Right. So that's being done at seven PM, and it's a hard stop at eight, as I believe, because the council is having its regular meeting at eight. So you wouldn't be expected to attend more than an hour for that anyway.
I want to encourage everybody to come. This, I'd rather it not be optional. I can't force you to come. But it would be a really good show of support and also for your ongoing understanding of what's happening with this. It's only one hour on Monday night, and I really appreciate it if you all can make it a priority to, to attend online. You don't have to show up at the, at the senior center. Okay, anything from anybody else? Questions, updates, whatever?
Bonnie, this is Tanya. This is my last meeting, so I just wanted to say thank you guys for, for, it's been good serving with you guys. And I'm, I'm sure I'll see you around town.
Well, yeah, if you have time to be around town, I don't know. It sounds like you're going to be commuting. I've just, I don't know if anyone else has noticed it, one twenty eight and four ninety five are back to their old horrible commutes any day of the week. So good luck on that one, Tanya. I'm sorry.
The times, the times that I've been going, I don't go every day, but the times I've been going haven't been horrible. So that's good. And I still can work at home for now.
I'm not going at six o'clock at night.
Well, Tanya, how appropriate to hear that the six C passed because I very much appreciate the work that you and Don did on that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, nice way to go out. And thanks for your work. Yes, you will be missed.
I know. We'll have to, we'll have to go, go check out the parklets and go for a drink at some point when we can. It's a bummer that I haven't, in some ways, having these virtual meetings has kept me going, I think, keeping me on the board because they're easy. But, but it's a bummer not to be in person with everyone. So.
Yeah.
True.
Yeah, thank you so much, Tanya. I'm very appreciative of everything you've offered and given to us.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have an app. Okay, we do have an applicant to replace. Well, we can't replace her or substitute for her, but we have another, we have an applicant who will eventually get through the permitting process. His name is Bob Kowp. You're going to have to learn how to pronounce it because it's spelled K O U P. He's an architect. He's still practicing, though cutting back toward retirement. But he works in the large development space. So in some ways, he has that perspective that we're losing with Tanya. Just slightly different. So I, yes, he's an architect, but so different from residential architecture that he represents a view that I think will be beneficial to us. So we'll see him when he gets approved. Oh, I just saw the letter that went into the mayor and it's, you know, in the pipeline, as it were. So, good. Anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Please make it.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Second it.
And Anne seconds it. Okay. Roll call. Alden.
Yes.
Beth.
Yes.
Anne.
Yes.
Tanya.
Yes.
Leah had to leave at eight fifty five for the record, Linda. MJ.
Yes.
Dawn.
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Good night, everybody.